I'd like to call this meeting the Ellsworth Planning Board to Order, January 7th, 2015, 7:00 PM. With us this evening, who have we? We have Don Martin, we have, you know?
Mike.
I need a list. Mike Howley, yes, but it was your name.
(laughing).
Hi, I'm Darryl.
Darrell Wilson, yes, okay. Oh, did I forget myself? I'm John Fink, Chair. I did, I did, you weren't listening. Okay. First item of business is adoption of the minutes of the December 3rd meeting. Is anyone in motion regarding the minutes? Any additions or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes as written.
Is there a second? All in favor, please? Okay. Oh. Election of officers for one year, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, and Secretary. Are there nominations for Chairperson?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate John Fink as Chairperson.
I want to be continuous, I'll second.
That's very generous of you. For Vice Chairperson, is there a nomination, or two, or three?
I haven't had a vice chair. I'll nominate Darrell's.
Yeah, I'll second.
I'll second. Well, thank you.
Now, we need a nomination for Secretary, or two, or three, or...
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Don Martin as Secretary.
Is there a second? Oh, okay. Are there any further nominations for any position?
I'll accept his second.
That's very generous of you.
It's a so easy job.
Seeing that there are no, there's no opposition to any position, all those in favor at the slate, please raise hands. Thank you. You're stuck with us.
That's awesome, thank you very much.
Kathy McCullough, awesome a long time. Okay. Next item of business is final plan for a major use development entitled Jay's Pit Stop and the Back Forty Sporting Center for J. M. and Kathy Gibbs. Proposal is to construct a 3,200 square foot building for use as both a restaurant and residence, as well as a pad for seasonal ice skating rink and skateboard park on 4.9 acres of 59.2 acres, tax map 84 lot 5 on the Bangor Road in the rural zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Andrew McCullough, representing the applicant. At the December meeting, there were a couple items that we discussed and that we needed to provide some additional information to you. One was, we worked with Mike Hangy on the turning movements for emergency vehicles, and so we have shown some, a layout of a theoretical emergency vehicle maneuvering its way through the site and making different turns. And I believe that, after reviewing that with him, that he was satisfied that it was accessible. The, we did not have for you at the December meeting a full lighting plan, a full-scale lighting plan, and that has been provided to you, that is in each of your folders. The third thing that comes to mind is, we had originally requested a stormwater waiver to the peak flow, or the flooding standard, and we, I reworked the stormwater so that there is no waiver required, that we meet the standard for peak flow, as well as for treatment and for phosphorus. The, and I believe, again, speaking without something in front of me, I believe those were the primary items of concern at the December meeting. There were other items that were addressed at the TRT. We did hatch and note that the entrances will be paved. We have included a legend on the plan. And I believe that is it. We have, we did provide a plan that showed flow paths and waterflooded boundaries. And I believe that that...
In the plan tonight, there was this needed to the board?
That shows the lighting, what the lighting plan provides, as well as it shows that we meet the standard. So there's a, in the lighting table, there is, the first number is what we are providing, the second number is what the ordinance requires. And so, in, as far as for maximum and for minimum, we are meeting those items. We also, one thing we did not have, which you can see we have now, is we had, we have a defined floor plan, so that we knew where our doorways were going to be, and so we could show our lighting at our doorways, and we could show those doorways on the plan for the building.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
The question I had about the stormwater is that the proposed level spreaders now are the, those are the only places where the stormwater system discharges out into the existing property. Is there, so you're not asking for a certain amount of forested buffer to be available there to deal with this excess flow? When you restructured the stormwater, it became unimportant what came out of the level spreader, because it was less?
This, right, it's less than or equal to.
Okay.
On the property.
All right, so that, none of that area needs to be protected in any way?
No, it does not. Correct.
The other, the other observation that I had was, the ice skating rink had this bridge structure that went over it, and then you provided this other alternate ramped path that goes over towards it?
Yes.
I see that there's a parking spot right in front of that ramp. Is, were you intending to crosshatch that so people wouldn't park there?
We, I can do that.
Is there a curb cut right there?
There is no curb there.
Okay.
But, I mean, I could, I mean, we, we more than meet the parking standards, so, I mean, I could get rid of that parking space, because you're right, it is where the path ties in.
Yeah, that was really the only thing I noticed about it.
Yep.
I think that's how I had it, Mr. Chairman. I might just add, there's two level spreaders.
There are two, yes. One is 25 feet, and the one on the southerly side is 50 feet.
Is that it from the board? In that case, let me open the public hearing. Anyone may comment upon this matter. I ask that before you speak, you be recognized by the Chair and then go to the lectern to address us. Does anyone wish to speak? Do you wish to talk more?
No, I was instructed not to.
Does the city have any other concerns about?
No.
We're ready to go.
What would the board like to do in that case?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the final plan for major use site development entitled Jay's Pit Stop and the Back Forty Sporting Center, proposal to construct a 3,200 square foot building for a restaurant and residence, as well as a pad for a seasonal ice skating rink and skateboard park on 4.9 acres of the 59.2 acres, tax map 84 lot 5 on the Bangor Road, I make a motion that we find this meets the Section 607 standards, Article 8, performance standards, 9, street design, stormwater, parking standards, and that we approve this project.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please?
Thank you.
Okay. Do you get to go home now and sit in front of the board?
No.
Just giving you the opportunity, and we can leave early. Next item of business, preliminary plan for a major site, major use site development entitled R.F. Jordanson's Gravel Borrow Pit. Proposal is to extract gravel from 30 acres of the 77 acre property, tax map 52 lot 7 in the rural zone. Property is accessory of the 7970 route, road from Route 179. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Andrew McCullough. It's been a while since you've seen this, and there were several outstanding issues when we met to discuss this originally. One was essentially a typographical error on my part, as far as the owner's name in one spot being PRB, and I think in another spot I had PRD. I have corrected that to be consistent and correct. It is PRB LLC. Another was showing that I had a right to represent this project, and so there is an email that was provided from Patrick Jordan stating that he is the principal of PRB, and he stated in that email, and I'm just paraphrasing, that R.F. Jordan is, has, he's authorizing R.F. Jordan to be the applicant in this case, and for R.F. Jordan to operate the pit, and also for me to represent him in presenting this application. The, we did have a site walk. The other point of discussion at the previous meeting was the, well, two things, the need for a groundwater study, so that there was a basis for the elevation of the bottom of the pit, demonstrate that it was not going to be in the groundwater table. And there was also, in my previous plan, I had showed the excavation to be connected to the existing pit, and it was your opinion, based on the ordinance, that there needed to be a buffer maintained on the property line, even though different entities owned by Patrick Jordan, unless it was wrapped into, unless it was handled differently, unless it was one owner or one lot, that we had to stay away from that property line. So I changed the grading plan, so that I've maintained a buffer adjacent to the abutting property that is owned by PCJ, LLC, excuse me. And the groundwater study was performed by Arnold Fessenden, geologist, and in summary, the conclusion of that report was that there was the potential that the, there could be groundwater at approximately elevation 148. And I believe in my previous application, I called for a bottom elevation of 150 or 154, something like that. But anyway, I revised the application so that the proposed bottom of pit is 155, greater than five feet above the groundwater, what was determined to be the groundwater table. So those things have been revised, and the grading plan and the plan for the borrow pit has, has been revised to reflect that. The, in, and I know this is not a discussion for tonight, I think that it would be a wise thing to consider in the ordinance how we might be able to permit pits to be the buffer or the barrier between pits to be removed, if both property owners agree, and maybe with certain standards, just because it's a very huge quantity of material in a location that's away from, you know, other properties, and so to limit sprawl and other things, but I know that's a discussion probably for another time.
They're not going to like me.
No?
Well, I'm looking at those three emails that I should provide. And one, first one says, "I, Patrick Jordan, give Andrew McCullough permission to represent R.F. Jordan. Signed, Patrick Jordan, President of R.F. Jordan &amp; Sons Construction." And the next one is that you get permission to represent PRB LLC and R.F. Jordan. Signed again, Patrick Jordan, President, R.F. Jordan &amp; Sons. And the third one, "PRB gives R.F. Jordan permission to operate a gravel pit on their Ellsworth pit," and again, it's signed Patrick Jordan, R.F. Jordan &amp; Sons. Nowhere is anyone signing on behalf of PRB identified as a, as a principal or otherwise of PRB. Therefore, I would suggest that the application still doesn't meet the right title or interest. Now, I realize that Pat is involved with PRB, but there's nothing here that tells us that. It's all signed by the President of R.F. Jordan &amp; Sons. No representative of PRB is involved in this. Tells you where I don't like it.
I thought there was a reference that said PRB and R.F. Jordan.
Yes, but it, but no one has signed saying that PRB, no, no principal of PRB has said anything regarding what PRB gives permission to do. Oh, yeah, but...
The deed.
You should at least know what the letters stand for, right, PRB?
Well, the deed is to PRB, but again, we don't have that nexus between PRB and R.F. Jordan.
It's maybe something that...
And it's very simple to fix.
Maybe something we can...
Well, it's very, all we need is a letter or an email from Pat Jordan as principal of PRB saying, you know, PRB grants to R.F. Jordan, you know, permission to permit this and use the property. Everything's there but that one tiny piece, which could be presented at the final.
If we could do that, that would be great.
I don't see why that couldn't be done, but I'm just speaking for me. The board may disagree with me thoroughly, and of the role of the Chair. It's been known to happen at least once. Yes? You look like a...
I was just going to make a note that the request is to deliver a note from PRB.
From TRB. So it could be Patrick Jordan, President of PRB, or whatever the title is.
Saying that...
That PRB grants to R.F. Jordan, you know, the right to use that property and take out a permit, you know, whatever is needed there.
Okay.
So, do you, do you have something for him to make him even more uncomfortable?
I do, actually.
Oh, good.
If the owner provided, John, this is related but not related, if the owner provided a statement that even though the abutting pits are owned by different entities, that the entities are owned by the same people, would you be willing to take...
They're not really owned by this, so they're two separate legal entities. And as separate legal entities, unless they combine the two lots under a single ownership of either one of those entities, then you could, then the issue goes away. But as long as they're, as a PRB sold the lot to R.F. Jordan, fine, or the other way around, wouldn't matter. But as long as they're separate entities, then we're stuck with the wording of the ordinance.
And I believe that...
Now, if the ordinance were changed, then they could just come back and say, "We need to get rid of this buffer," and we could have to hang that.
Now, I believe, Darrell, that you had, I think it was you requested that the buffer at the, I guess it's the northwest property line, the flag, so that the...
At the time, at the time that we did the site visit, it was, wasn't clear where that buffer would be, because, because the land had been cleared, but in the application, it shows on the plan, and there's some requirement to vegetate that.
Okay.
So I think the vegetation would be a clear indicator. I was just trying to keep them from, you know, continuing to erode at that face and just keep going towards the property line. I think that's been addressed.
So you're all set with that?
I am.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any member of the public wish to comment on this application? Yes, sir, please, come up and state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Gil Grendel. I've hunted in that area for over 50 years, and there was never a road going in like today. The road was, used to go in where Skip Grendel now has residence in there, and it went to the left, and it went around that way. And to get to that property, which you're talking about, you had to go right through the middle of Ray Appleby's land to get to it. Somehow, the road put in, the way it is, they call it 7079, there's never been a 7079 ever. Somebody took the poster that was on the original and put it way up high. The individual didn't want anybody going that way, because it's his favorite hunting spot. So, anyways, a forester went in, put a road across the trout brook leading to that property to get the wood off. And that, on the low pad, is a spring that's probably four feet across. The acreage involves approximately 20 acres, 10 acres of wetland. Off to the left, as you look straight in back towards the larger pit that's in there. I don't know how they ever got that culvert in there and bridged across, dug out what they wanted to do, but it was done. I'm sure they didn't get permission, but it's done anyway. The land continued through, Ray Appleby's land went straight ahead. A road went all the way to the pit in which Ducas was hauling out of. The only other way to get in there would have been golf, would have been to go through up the Fletcher's Landing. Back then, they used to call it Lot's Pit. Well, a guy named Dana, he got everybody to sign off, and he ended up with the pit. They refused, he refused to let them go through that way to get to the pit. So this is how the road came, they're calling 7079. There was no such thing. I inquired about the property two years before Bangor hydro, I mean, before Sargent rebuilt the highway north of Ellsworth. I had Mr. Walker, Attorney Walker, do some work for me. He said, he gave me all, all the things that had to be done. Turned out, he got sick and I got sick, so I didn't get through with all of that. One thing I had to get was the landowner's written permission to go across that land, because the other one no longer, you couldn't get through there, because the pit was done. I don't understand how they come up with so much acreage. There's an awful lot of wetland there, a lot of it on the left-hand side going in, as you face the pit itself. There's approximately a little more than a million and a half yards of gravel there. That's on the low end. There were five test holes dug there four years ago for gravel by the forester, and then you covered them back over. But I can't see how they can go across the trout brook without doing something to it. That's my main concern, the trout brook that's in there.
Do you know what year that road was put in?
Not right off, I couldn't...
Just a rough guess.
25 years ago?
The question then is, what were the regulations at the time the road was put in regarding the trap, but permission from the property owner to put that in is... is not really a matter for the planning board. That would be between the property owners.
Right. Like, if I, I was interested in it, but then sickness took over. I would have had to get written permission to leave one seventy-nine to go on that land. Another concern might have been gravel being hauled out of the pit way back. They may not want somebody else hauling too. Because the road is not built for the two pits hauling out. It's very dangerous. I don't know if a few people ever go check these properties and are, but.
We walked the pit, yes, we did.
Have you anything else for us?
No, I just feel that should have something in writing that leave the road, one seventy-nine, from whoever owns that land right there. I thought Paper Company and Boxport, they don't own any land. They only own the mill, and they're getting rid of that. I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have maps. Back in nineteen sixty, the whole city developed. It's very interesting to get them.
Mr. McCullough, have you any comment? Or, let me hope, before, actually, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay. Go ahead, please.
There's a very extensive deed that's included in the application that goes over that access all the way in. And defines that. And the one thing regarding safety, one thing that we did, was mentioned originally almost a year ago, and that came back to my mind at the TRT meeting is Mike Hangy had recommended to have a sign at the intersection where you turn off from the road that goes on into what, where Dukas used to haul out of. And that identified the Hurley pit so that if emergency vehicles are accessing it through this road, that they know the difference between, so that they know where to go. And that was the only safety item that I believe that we had discussed and how to, and that was the way we agreed to address that. I did not, I will note that on a final plan, that there will be a sign placed there identifying that as the direction to the Hurley pit.
And what about the wetlands and
the, I mean.
Spring and so forth?
Well, honestly, as far as the responsibility for the original construction of that road and the permitting of that, that would have been the responsibility of the owner of that property when it was put in. You know, any changes to that that would be proposed would then need to be addressed with the environmental agencies. But frankly, utilizing an existing road like that, that has been the responsibility of a different party, I believe, is outside of the realm of the applicant. If it's there and it's, you know, to the best of our knowledge, it's been all approved and permitted as it needs to be.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if you look at page six of the deed, it describes the easements given to Prentice and Kyle Isle for the purpose of hauling wood products and road builder materials, so it looks like.
All right. Did you wish to comment further?
No.
Any further questions from the board, for the applicant? With the material presented this evening, it looks like the missing items are with us. We need not discuss unless we really want to the merits of them. That would be for next meeting. But if you have questions regarding them, we can go further.
I can just offer full disclosure. I think Andrew addressed it well, that what was presented earlier, public comments, are outside of the scope of this product, project. I am that forester that put in that road. So if you'd like to talk to me after the meeting, I'd be happy to do so, representing the adjoining landlord. But as far as planning board member in this application, the only comment I have, that was made by, early comment, was the right-of-way width vegetation clearing. You're gonna have a lot of gravel truck conflict between two gravel pit operations ongoing. We may want to consider widening that road and upgrading that road just for, to avoid head-on collision between drivers, because it will be very busy. Thanks.
I would just like to go on to record as saying that, understand that the owner of the property has the right to do, you know, what they, what they will and use the property as they, and I agree with that, and I understand that there is a considerable amount of material of value that could be removed from that area without affecting the water table. I think that's entirely within their rights to do that. I am concerned, though, that that use does, because it's over an aquifer, and there are some contingency plans about that aquifer. I feel like we need to just be careful about, you know, what we're gonna do there and make sure that the right things are in place so that we don't end up in a situation where we contaminate an aquifer because it was my understanding that that kind of thing can take hundreds of years to be repaired. So with that in mind, I want to say, you know, I don't have any problem with the applicant using the land, you know, the way that it is, but I want to be careful here. And the things that I'm gonna say go along those lines. I did read some main statutes, and I understand, first of all, on the prior point about the boundaries between operators of gravel pits, there is a provision that I read that talks about if the, if the owners put this down in writing, that there are no buffer is required, and it is recorded in the deed, they can do this kind of zero buffer thing.
That's correct.
And I noticed in your application, you have some, two statements about lighting and buffering. And then there's another statement about solid waste disposal reclaiming and buffering. And you describe no buffer is proposed on the west or south side of the excavation.
Can I, I apologize, I did not revise that text in this application from my previous application, but I revised the plan.
Okay.
Okay, but I didn't revise that piece of text.
And then on the lighting and buffering, all it says, oh yeah, it says the same thing. Okay, so I guess my comment on that, I think the buffer on the west side is entirely reasonable to keep that to a minimum, but it seems like that needs to be recorded in the deed. And the structure of the statute says that when the mining operation stops, that that agreement or that buffer goes away.
And and I, and believe me, I advocate for that, but based on what, how we've discussed this as far as how the ordinance is written at the current time, I don't know that we're in that position.
And I agree with you about the southern buffer.
Yeah.
The western buffer, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do no buffer.
Yeah.
I think it would be, we would like, we would like to see that that be recorded in the deed in some way.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we ask for a note on the plan?
Uh, yeah, that would be good.
This was just a test, Michelle, to see if you were listening.
Oh, I'm listening.
The other things that I have about the pit and its operation is we have in our section eight oh one point three, a mention of dust and dirt. And I'd like to, I guess, have some information from the applicant, sort of detailing how they're gonna handle, you know, keeping the air quality, and I don't want to see a lot of drifting dust and stuff, you know, coming out of the pit.
Right. And that, yes, and I will say, not that you don't need to see it too, but in an application to the state which will follow this, to permit this. The two things that are done and that I will propose in this application will be watering with a water truck and as well as calcium chloride or similar to suppress dust. And, you know, as you see, most of these contractors of any size have a water truck. And yes, it certainly is useful on the, on project sites, but as much as anything, it's as, it's useful when they have long gravel roads like this. And so, you know, RF Jordan is very used to doing those things, utilizing those methods. You know, they're simple, but they're, but they're effective because of all the gravel road that they already have. And so I don't have a problem with including that in the application.
Okay.
Yep.
And along the lines of wherever this road connects up to one seventy?
Nine.
Nine. I would assume that that entranceway, I don't know how much stuff comes off trucks when they go out into a hard surface road, but I wouldn't expect any, you know, I'm thinking of when I drive by farms and they're driving their tractors back and forth. There's a lot of debris that ends up on the road. I would expect that, that paved surface would be kept clean by the time those trucks get there.
It, and you're right, it will be because, I mean, the road is a hard surface. I mean, that, that existing road in has a pretty hard surface to it. And so most of the material is gonna come off of those trucks long before it ever reaches the road.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm just concerned about in, you know, chroming weather conditions. I just don't want to be dragging a bunch of mud up onto that part of the road.
Yeah.
The other thing that I have concern with is above-ground outdoor storage facilities. Now, it's my understanding that if there's equipment in there that's running, at some point, diesel fuel has to be added to those. So I don't know if this is something that's gonna happen off-site, or whether it's gonna happen there, but the ordinance talks about protecting the ground, and the statute appears to have some very detailed things about, you know, spill containment and hard surfaces where they do these transfers and special kind of tanks that they store any materials in. So I would emphasize that our ordinance, section eight oh one point four, mentions this. And if the gravel pit is gonna be doing that kind of activity, I'd like to see some evidence that they're, you know, dealing with that in some way.
I will address fueling. I mean, I won't, it will be done in accordance with those standards, and I mean, but I will put something together for you that addresses that.
Okay. That'd be great, thank you. And just a question about blasting. Is there, does gravel and sand operations typically involve a lot of blasting? It's more just removing the material?
It, it, it's excavating, potentially crushing, but it does not, I mean, this operation, there's no anticipated blasting.
Okay.
There's no blasting anticipated.
Crushing is noisy. If you were looking at for vibration or noise by crushing.
I was just thinking of ground impact, but there's really not a lot of stuff around there, I guess. I think you've addressed the buffer. After rereading the plan and going through what you submitted, I'm satisfied with the buffers that you proposed to restore along the, I guess it would be sort of the eastern boundary. So my last area of inquiry is about groundwater protection. And I know that there's standards for this. And I understand that you've established the groundwater level and that you're gonna excavate down to that. My question about that is, not knowing how gravel operations happen, how do they really know where that level is that they've, they've reached that? Is that something that they measure weekly? Is there a set benchmark somewhere that they measure from? How do they calibrate to make sure that they don't get within a distance of that?
They, what you will see, or, well, no, you probably won't see it because you won't be out there, but what occurs is companies like RF Jordan have GPS units and other survey equipment that is frankly accurate down to the centimeter, both vertically and horizontally. And they've been using it a lot in the layout of the work up at the Milton Park, just for one example. And so with that instrumentation, even, even if there isn't a benchmark, because, because the the one instrument, you know, is bouncing off the satellites. And, but that is still accurate to within a centimeter or two. And so they can go out there and they can check it anytime. They can set up that instrument in a matter of minutes and know exactly what elevation they're at, where, what elevation they need to stop.
So that's just a routine method of operation, is that they're watching their elevation all the time that they're out there working. It's not gonna go three weeks of digging and then, oh, look, we, okay, that's fair enough.
Yeah.
The other question that I have is about sort of the groundwater itself, and in the description of the, of the aquifer, the, it says in the package that the groundwater tends to flow the same way that the drainage does on the site. And so that would mean to me, I guess, if I was standing with the old gravel pit behind me, it's gonna be going out and towards Graham Lake in some way. And so my question is, is there's a monitoring pit apparently in the other gravel pit. What is, why was that put there? What is the purpose of that? And do we need one downstream of this?
It, I mean, the, a monitoring well serves two purposes. One is it gives the availability to sample the groundwater. As you can see in, you know, in the report, that there was a sample taken.
Right, that's where that came from.
Dropped a pump and took that. It also gives the opportunity, because we know exactly what elevation the top of that is at, we can drop a sensor down and know exactly what that depth to groundwater is. So that's, that's the two things that that gives, or the opportunity for those things. They, what, and this is going in, and this is a comment that's different from what you're talking about right now, but what was interesting, what I found interesting is the elevation of the, or the depth of the groundwater, or the elevation of that groundwater was remarkably. was remarkably consistent, whether it was May, when the groundwater tables are typically near their highest, or whether it was July, when they're typically getting close to their lowest. It was, I don't think it was a tenth difference.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yes.
Right.
So I, I found that interesting. I found that comforting, if you will. But a monitoring well gives the opportunity for both of those things.
Would it be appropriate to place another one in this project area, given that it would be downstream from any proposed, like, contamination from this project?
I guess, or, let me put it this way, if you're, I can't speak for the applicant tonight regarding that, because we haven't discussed it. If, if the board is inclined to ask for something like that, I can discuss it, but I can't, I don't.
I guess, I guess my first question is, is why is there one in the other pit? Was there some requirement to place it there? Was that put there on good faith? Was it, you know, what was sort of the genesis of that?
I can't, I honestly can't speak to the entire genesis. I didn't permit that portion of that pit.
Okay.
So I can't really speak to it.
So, yeah, so I'm wondering if a monitoring well downstream of this proposed flow would be appropriate for this project. And the other concern that I have is the, these town boundary things, we're right on the edge of Fletcher's Landing and Hancock. So, were, they, they were notified of this project before?
Before and again. They had two notifications, before when it first came.
And do they have access to these application materials?
They have access like any other, notify the, but they have to call and come and see it. If we would have extra packages and they asked for it, we would have but we have received no calls, that I know of.
Because one of the, one of the county commissioners had come to the first meeting.
Oh, that's right.
That's correct. And that's why I'm asking this question is, has this information been shown to them? And on the flip side.
We don't show the information. We simply notify them, the meeting that is coming in that, you know, the time and place of the meeting and that they're within the area that we will notify them. They're close enough to the project, they're getting a notification.
Okay, so then my next question is, is there information that they have regarding this gravel pit, specifically any monitoring or wells that they've set up, information that they have about groundwater quality that we can get from them?
I can't answer this question. We have not, nobody's contacted us.
I'd like to make a motion that we contact Hancock and Fletcher's Landing and get whatever information they have regarding groundwater quality, regarding these gravel pits, and that we sort of work together if they've got some monitoring going on that we can baseline before this project gets going.
Can you be more specific to what exactly are we gonna be requesting?
Any groundwater impact data or analysis, including monitoring well data, and any enforcement actions on this operation.
On the operation that's owned by the applicant or any?
The existing gravel operation.
That's in within their time limits. Okay.
But there is no gravel extraction, I mean, by any entity of RF, or Patrick Jordan or RF Jordan in township.
Fletcher's Landing.
Fletcher, I'm sorry, Fletcher's Landing.
Okay, all right, that's fair. Then it's just Hancock.
And I, and I can tell you that I permitted the gravel pit that Dugas has operated for the last 10 years, and there has not been any monitoring of groundwater there.
But they're not in the aquifer? The Dugas pit is not in the aquifer?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so I guess I'm not familiar.
Usually all pits are over there. That's how I, that's how I want.
Right, got that. I'm with you on that. So, what are you calling the Dugas pit then? Is it the one to the south of this? The one that we visited and saw, or you're talking something that's
It was.
off that access road and further away?
It was further away.
But the question you've asked me to look, that's, that could be part of the motion, is based on the operation of the applicant's, his operation that touches Hancock, the town of Hancock.
Yes.
That's what we want. Because we're not talking about the Dugas pit. We're talking about this pit as it is extending to the abutting town.
And pertains to groundwater. Anything that they have that we can baseline. So that's the motion that I make, is that we ask them for that.
Is there a second to this motion?
Yeah, I'm going to, if I can. Is it possible to put the burden on the applicant that that information be requested by the applicant and be provided by the applicant since this is a, that's the burden of the applicant to demonstrate that. So maybe.
If you're okay with that.
I can do my best to obtain that.
I mean, if it's a matter of just the town, it just seemed like, from the site visit.
I think it's better done by the applicant in this case.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I'm not sure, yes. Hancock will have nothing. Because
That's not.
I have some experience with their planning board over the years.
That's not what I heard from the commissioner, though. And is he, is he from the?
He is from Hancock.
He's on the Hancock Planning Board.
Okay, so my, my motion still stands, then?
Yeah, I mean, it's a reasonable motion. It's just my expectations are low.
Jerry, you had begun to make reference towards the town lines or really what's pertinent is the boundary lines. And during that site visit, we had discussed that 50-foot buffer between ownership lines, it really was irrelevant if it was a town line or not. And I think as long as that line is maintained, I mean, stays within the ordinance, I think Michelle had made a comment about planting trees or some kind of marker to identify where that 50-foot line is, because I think as we all know, as that pit becomes operational, that still will.
What I saw that they proposed in the plan was a 100-foot buffer, and they were gonna re-vegetate it, is that right?
I don't believe it's 100.
Oh, okay, so my mistake.
The discussion was about, that we had had, I think you're right, was about blazing that 50-foot, so it was clear when the person is excavating where he or she probably be.
And I, I felt like the fact that they mentioned that they were gonna re-vegetate that, a whole buffer, would have been.
That, that, I mean, that setback will be well defined before any excavation takes place.
That was the extent of the question, the discussion of that day, too, is that, you know, we were just asking, confirming that 50-foot requirement.
Yeah, I think they dealt with that. Is my motion gonna go anywhere?
Oh.
Did it get seconded?
Well, do you still want, is your motion to have the city do it, or do you wish to change that to the applicant?
I would amend the motion to.
Yeah, well, it hasn't been seconded. You can do whatever you want with it.
Okay, then. We request from them through the applicant, any groundwater impact data or analysis, including monitoring well data.
I'll second it. Any discussion about this?
All in favor, please?
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Now, do you have, oh, excuse me, you wish to make a comment?
Yes, on the.
Could you come up and again identify yourself for the recording?
Yes, Gil Grundle, on the further end of the pit to be done, it runs right into the pit where Dugas all the time. Run right into it. The road went right through, right there, and Dugas dug a hole so nobody could get through there. Truck off, four-wheeling. So it goes right to that pit. The Hancock, there's Hancock involved, Eldwood involved, and Fletcher's Landing involved. Now, Fletcher's Landing, now, of course, that's state of Maine. You gotta go through there. Then Hancock, and then Eldwood. On all these things you're asking for, if they were done.
Thank you. Any comments? Now, what would the board like to do as far as finding that this preliminary plan is complete? Because that's what the applicant needs to be able to proceed.
I believe the first was the matter around the title, right interest.
Yes, that.
Yeah, so the three things I have that I'm gonna mention in a motion of completeness, is gonna be a letter from PRV that grants RF Jordan, the, letter from PRV that grants RF Jordan the right to go through with this project. And that they would add to the final plan, that there would be a sign installed for the Hurley pit, and that there would be some note on the plan about the buffers being recorded as part of the deed. And that would be, I think, fair to close out completeness?
Yeah, it's, those things will be presented in the final plan.
Does anybody have anything else that they think needs to be part of completeness? Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, with regard to agenda item number four, the preliminary plan for major use site development, before I go any further, can I stop and ask the city if their items on the TRT have been addressed to their satisfaction?
Not for the completeness portion. I think what we have is gonna be more than necessary.
Okay, so with regard to agenda item number four, preliminary plan for major use site development titled RF Jordan &amp; Sons gravel borrow pit, for RF Jordan &amp; Sons, proposal to extract gravel from 30 acres of 77-acre, 77-acre property, tax map 52, lot 7, in the rural zone, and the property being accessed via the 7970 road from 179. The planning board finds that this is an allowed use in this zone, and that the application is complete in terms of submission materials, with the exception of a letter from PRV that grants RF Jordan right title and interest to have this, to run this project, in that a sign for the Hurley pit will be put as a note on the final plan, that that'll be part of the final plan to direct emergency vehicles, and that a note will be incorporated into the plan about buffers between adjacent properties being recorded in the deed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please? Okay. And now you can go home and sit in front of the fire.
Thank you.
Next item of business is amendments to chapter 56 of the Unified Development Ordinance, Article 3 zoning districts and Article 8 performance standards. Those amendment corrects an error to section 306 on purpose and rectifies a conflict between table 307 and table use regulations in section 819.3 zoning districts. Is someone presenting that to the board?
So basically, when we did the major overhaul, the language in the actual, in Article 8 that pertains to mobile home talked about where you allow mobile home, and that was inconsistent with the tables that we have in Article 3. So, really, what we meant to have is, what I'm proposing in Article 3 to allow mobile home in the mobile home parks, that is, to allow in the, both the urban and the rural versus just the rural. So we're basically, you know. Originally, it was just in the rural. When, we had the old ordinance, for some reason, there was just in the rural, and that was left over there. It was meant to be in the urban and the rural.
Questions, reactions?
Some revisionist to section 3, Article 3?
Well, the big, yeah, is that we are allowing now, I should have underlined this, I guess it's not underlined or we can't see it, is we're allowing it in the table on page, on table 307, we are now adding a yes on the urban for mobile home park. And we made a similar change in Article 8 on page 25. And then there's other small, very, very small, just housekeeping, basically. Just like spelling the HHS, taking the city of Eldwood sign ordinance out and replacing by articles, you know, the inconsistencies that were there. But the true change is to make sure that what's in Article 8 is consistent with what's in Article 3.
And what was, you said, page 25?
So in 819.14, excuse me, 15.
Yeah.
It says, for example, it says it'd be two places actually. It says that in 819.3, it said zoning districts. Mobile home parks are like only in the rural. What we're adding is only in the urban and the rural. And we're doing the same change on 819.15, we are adding the word urban. And then we went, oh, excuse me, and then, because in the table, we were allowing them in the urban and the rural, that's what it is. In the table, we're allowing it in the urban and the rural, but in the text, we're only allowing them in the rural.
Oh, so that's why you had to revise it.
That's why they not underlined it, yeah. So we're just bringing the two together.
Okay.
It's, and then there's like, I spelled the HHS and I did just like some silliness where one place, we talked about the sign ordinance. We don't have a sign ordinance anymore. We have Article 12, so I just brought this in compliance. I think that's it. That's really.
Oh, so that's why we got a copy of all of Article 8 then? Because there was more than just those two paragraphs.
Yeah, got the what?
The, the housekeeping changes that you just mentioned were also in Article 8?
The housekeeping changes are in Article 8.
Okay.
Oh, and there was one more.
Surprise.
Yeah, no, it's, I didn't even remember that was. The, so, so we did that change. And the other change is in Article 3. Sorry about that. In Article 3, they, 306.1 on page 4, the document, under the zones, we had the urban zone and we had the neighborhood zone. And there was a mix-up on how these zones were written. There was some language that belonged in the urban that was put in the neighborhood, so basically, I cleaned that up.
Oh, this was the the mixed-use thing?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And just got more. It's all housekeeping. It's, it's, basically, when we did the big overhaul, things got forgotten here and there because that's the nature of it, and we're just picking up on them, so we're fixing them.
What it really is, is that the planning office is not as perfect as the plan.
Should we take public comment on that?
We could, yes.
Well, what do you think?
Would any member of the public like to comment on this? Here we go, close the public here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with regard to these amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, article three and article eight that we recommend the proposed amendments to the city council.
Is there a second? All in favor, please? Okay. Are there mylar's to sign? We're suspiciously like there. And perhaps someone could propose that with the completion of the signing of the mylar's, we will stand adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, there.